All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, June 24th, 2024. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're here for a special session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order, and we have Commissioners Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. We have no minutes. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Daniel, anybody on line? Being known, I'll close the public testimony. No old business, no consent. Stacy, y'all have anything? So at this time, we'll deal with Action Item 1, Physical Year 2024-2025 Budget. Commissioners, I'm going to start. Do y'all get the salary survey from TAC? TAC, our association? I just got it like last week. Think they do it every two years. This is a 2024 edition. If it's all right, I'll go through it and kind of do our comparables. County judges, for the public, we use Liberty, which is a county adjacent to Harris, similar size, similar tax base. I've not checked it this year, but last year, we were right at the same. Similar size of county. I think we're a little larger geographically. Use Bash Drop, which is on the east side of Travis County, similar population to us, similar size, about as close to comparables as anybody I can find. Rockwall, you know, it's similar to us, next door to us, but they're also the most affluent county in the state, so I usually throw their stuff out because all their salaries are a little higher than ours, and everybody else's, they're a little higher. And I usually use, I don't use Buie, Buie's in northeast corner of the state, Hector Cana, and it's similar in nearly everything except their revenue comes from sales tax. They must be the hub of northeast Texas and southeast Oklahoma and Arkansas because I know they've got a big shopping center over there with some of the big boxes and all, so they have a lot of sales tax. But they also are so far away from any metropolitan area, their salaries are consistently a lot lower than everybody else's, and so I don't usually use them as a comparable. And Victoria's down in the valley, close to Galveston, and it's very similar to us, and I usually use it because it's got similar size, similar population, similar problems to us. So with that, the judges that are in popular, Victoria's still just barely, on this report, barely under 100. They've got us over 100, even though the census was 99, 946. So County Judge in Victoria makes 120 with supplements of 32, 312, so I assume he gets the $25,000 supplement for holding court, which I don't do. So he gets seven, so he's making about 127. Bash Drop, County Judge there makes 95,5. He's got the supplement for hearing cases and 11, 730 for travel allowance. Hunt, I make 106, 46, and I have almost 20,000 supplements, 3,600 for being on the juvenile board and 17,100 car allowance. Liberty makes 125, 610 salary and a $25,000 car allowance. So we're all right there in range, so I think I'm comfortable with where mine is. Anybody got any comments? I think it ought to be something different. Not, we'll go to the next one, County Treasurer. I'll start with Victoria. Victoria Treasurer makes 89, 626 with no supplements. Bash Drop makes 89, 875 with a $1,380 travel allowance. Hunt, we make 86, 320 and a $3,000 travel allowance. Liberty's 87, 911 and no travel allowance. So they're all within $1,000 of each other. County clerks, Victoria's 83, 523 and a supplement of $6,100. Bash Drop's 84, 608 with a $1,380 travel allowance. Hunt is 86, 86, 329, $800 supplement. Liberty's 87, 911 with a $7,500 car allowance. So those all are hitting, all really pretty close to the same amount of money. Victoria's 89, 626. Bash Drop's 84, 607 with a $1,380 car allowance. Hunt's 86, 329, and Liberty's 87, 911. So we're all, all those seem to be in similar ranges. Victoria's 103,000 with a 27, 550 salary supplement.
What's the supplement?
27,000, 550.
What is the supplement for?
On the sheriff, I don't know. He just says...
On anybody?
Well, like on the...
On Judge...
Yeah.
...and all this, but what are all these other...
It's not defined, Phillip. I don't know what the salary supplements are. We can call TAC and ask them.
It's more than likely some type of car allowance.
Well, they got travel allowance, car allowance, and vehicle furnished, and so the salary supplement, I don't know, unless maybe they're doing something for another county or something, I don't know. I wouldn't think so.
Board appointments.
Board appointments, yeah, maybe a board appointment.
I'm hoping district.
Is that what you get? You get one for, yeah, there's probably, Becky gets one for being on the bail bond board. So there's some boards, there probably is.
And the juvenile board.
And the juvenile board, yeah. So Bash Drop Sheriff's 104, 304, 11, 730 travel allowance. Hunt's 110 with no supplements or anything, using the county vehicle. Liberty's 93, 720 with a $25,000 car allowance. Again, those are all kind of in the same ballpark. Tax Assessor Collector, Victoria's 60,000, 750. Bash Drop's 89, 872 with a $6,900 travel allowance. Hunt is 86, 329 with no allowances. Liberty's 87, 911 with no allowances. So again, to me, that's within a margin of error. Those are pretty close together. Commissioners in Victoria, they make 84, 550 to 88, 779 with 1,081 salary supplements for both of those. Bash Drop pays 90,000, 696, 1,140 travel allowance. Hunt's 86, 329 with 1,750 travel allowance. Liberty's 87, 911 with a $25,000 car allowance. So those are, salaries are in line pretty much, but some allowances are a little different. Justice of the Peace, Victoria's 61, 771 to 93, 894, and they have 1,081 supplement. Bash Drop's 68, 787 with a $7,763 travel allowance. Hunt's 75,000, 847 with a $6,700 car allowance, which we've already talked about, giving them a $1,200 additional this year, so that bumped them to 79. Liberty's at 58, 433, but they get a $25,000 car allowance. So that bumps them right back up in, higher than everybody, pretty much. Constables, Victoria, 56, 854 with 2,881 supplement. Bash Drop's 63, 132, no supplements. Hunt's 72, 936 with no supplements. And Liberty's 58, 433 with a $25,000 car allowance. So those are disparate a little bit. That's probably the biggest dispersion from kind of being in line. Victoria's a total of about 58,000. Bash Drop's a total of 63. We're a total of 72, and Liberty's a total of 83. So wherever we think we're, I guess we're kind of in the middle of the high and the low, so. Anyway, y'all, would y'all like me to get a copy? I want to call and get one from the TAC, or what do you, what's your pleasure?
Rick, can you? Okay, thank you.
There's a digital version.
Do what?
There's a digital version.
There is a digital version? Okay, all right. So y'all might want to study that before we sit. Salaries and see what your opinion is on it. There's a few that, most of them, I think, are pretty close, but there's a few that might need to, might need to have a discussion. The next thing I wanted to talk about, did y'all get your handout for the percentage of COLA for the, starting at 3% going to 9? The, I guess the biggest interest to me is the last page where it gives you the totals. So a 3% raise will add to the budget 613, $613,597, a 4% 733,519, a 5% a million, 10,700, and it keeps going up. I don't, Commissioners, I don't have a real strong opinion, other than it's probably, I feel like it ought to be between 3 and 5%. I think the national average right now for inflation is 3.71, I believe now. I think it was 3.91, I think it dropped last month to 3.70 or last quarter. So, but you know, that's, that's a goofy percentage because they, they don't put in food and gas and shelter in that one, and that's where most of our people spend their money, and that's certainly higher than the 3.71. So I don't know. I'm telling it out there. If anybody's got any suggestions, if you want to study it and think about it some more, your pleasure, anybody wants to express an opinion?
I'd like to study it some more.
Do what now?
I'd like to study it some more.
Okay.
Back and see, we've been doing some raises, and I think that's been good and necessary.
All right, and I feel pretty good. I think our salaries are pretty much, I think we got there. We got a few that we'll talk about in executive session. It may be a little out of whack that we won't, I won't talk about individuals, but other than that, we're, I think we're pretty close on most of our salaries, but, you know, the inflation's a hard, hard deal to keep up with. I think everybody, depending on how you spend your money is how that inflation hits you.
Since we're talking about salaries at this time, and you've hit it very well in reference to it, and I appreciate you leaving Rockwall out because it is completely different.
Oh, yeah. And they all got voted out when they gave themselves big raises.
They have probably less than 50 miles maintained to do it and all that, and I appreciate that. I would like to talk about part-time, basically, because, in fact, I know one commissioner and possibly some more has some part-time, and I understand that this raise that we give across the board will not affect part-time, and correct me if I say anything that's not to be true, okay? I was looking at, looking at some of these part-time in which I've had a deal started out many years ago with it, and we returned back to it as far as people that have trade schools that they're going to, and also if you're 18 years or older, to where we could hire these people part-time that are continuation of college and stuff like that. It's my understanding that the gentleman to my left has two part-times in reference, they have CDLs and all this, and our equipment operators, and a lot of my, well, especially two of them, and I'm saying this, they grew up on a farm, therefore they know a bit more about mechanics and able to operate different types of machinery. In this, I would like for the Commissioners' Court to possibly look at some of these in reference to part-time positions of that as far as the Commissioners that work for the Commissioners for the simple reason we have some people and we better keep them, especially if they have, especially if they have appropriate driver's licenses and stuff like that, and they're already skilled in working equipment.
So are you saying, Phillip, that, and I don't, I'm asking a question, so all of the Commissioners are paying a different pay scale for part-time? Is that your point?
No, if I'm not mistaken, you're 18, 19, I'd go...
They all pay, all pay a different pay scale? Okay.
Yes, yes, sir, they do. In fact, if I can find it right fast, I'll look at it, and this does not have anything to do with the regular salary, I mean, the salary that we're talking about, an increase across the board. If I may, I'll try to find it. I have, for instance, you're paying what, 18, 19? You have some very skilled people.
Mine's, mine's a little different, though, Phillip, yes. Both of mine, I've tried to offer them full-time jobs when they've come open. They don't want it, so they get stuck at the pay that they're at right now. If they want to make more money, they can go full-time and get the benefits, but one of them is a previous retired guy, and he doesn't want to work full-time, and the other one has another part-time gig as well, so my two don't want to go full-time.
Do you have a full-time opening?
No, sir. I just, I just filled the last one about a month or so ago.
Guys over here, y'all have any comments or concern? I mean, to me, that's your individual budget, if you want a budget...
I don't have any part-time yet.
You've got part-time funds.
I've got part-time funds.
All my, all my positions are full-time.
To me, that's an individual Commissioner's way he wants to run it. Mark wants, if he wants to run, if he wants part-time, he could add it to his budget.
He's in there. Yeah, Mark landed it, he could add it in there.
He's in it, he's just not funded. He's got a line item, but he's not funded or not budgeted. Yeah. But to me, Phillip, to me, that's up to each of y'all, but I'm just one voice, I don't know.
I'm, I think Commissioners should have some discretion in that, just based on what workforce is available for that position. I think everybody's...
And what you're hiring them to do. If you're going to hire them to just be a go-for or something, or if you're hiring somebody that's got a CDL license, it's, it's a different deal. If you've got a total pot of money there to pay, then to me, it'd be up to each of you, what you want to pay them and how much you want to work them. But we're not, y'all aren't the only ones that got part-time help. I mean, Homeland Security, emergency management, whatever, I don't, which one they follow, their homeland? Under, and there's quite a few of them that they use part-time. They work a lot of kids, I think, used to work around Lone Oak, I don't know if they're still working, they still work some Lone Oak High School kids to do trash pickup on the roads one or two days a week, and, and they use some on tire roundup day, and they use some on other things.
How much are they paying them, do you know? I think it's every Friday that they're doing this, once a week.
We'll work for.
They were, they were talking...
There's just a lot of variables going into that, hours worked, type of work.
Yeah.
Distance to work, you know, there's a lot of variables in it.
Yeah, so, you know, again, it's kind of me like Homeland Security, they kind of know about, we'll be talking about them in a little bit, but they kind of know what they need and what they can hire and what kind of skill sets, so.
And they also have law enforcement that are part-time that help also.
Yeah, they supervise some of those part-timers, yeah.
Or is the high school or...
Right.
I think that's to the individual Commissioner, just budgeting what you need. I mean, because it's different.
Well, I agree, and that's what I was looking at, because basically, I would like to, with these two people, I'd like it, like to put it up $1,248 for what it was over. That way, I could up theirs because I've got some, got some, got some good ones, to be quite honest with you.
Are you talking about right now for the current budget or for the future budget?
Oh, I'll be talking about the future.
Okay. Well, you just need to up your budget request.
Pardon?
You just need to put that in your budget request.
Well, that's what I was, that's why I was checking, that's why I was checking. Now, in the budget request, I do have, you know, for another slot for a person in reference to a, but I was talking to Sandy, she said, no, that never has gone like that, so basically...
They don't get the percentage rate.
No, they don't get the percentage. I'm just basically add more money to it, which would be $1,248.
So you just need to send me an email or something and tell me, well, send me a note or come change your budget, and we'll raise it up that much.
Yes.
Or Stacy, can you make a note of that?
It'd be, basically, it would bring it from, and this would be inclusive, if there's a difference of 1,248, or if I'm not mistaken, if you will check me on that.
It's 52,000, 416 right now in your hour, but what do you want to raise it?
I believe the difference that we're having right now would have been 1,248, if I'm not mistaken, would you? I believe that's correct.
Raise it to 60?
I wanted to go, what was, what's the overall budget that we have?
What was it, 52?
52, you just want to raise it to 55?
I gave you some room.
Pardon?
Is that 52,4? You wanted to do it to 55? It could be about 3,000, almost 3,000.
Now, is that what I was talking to you about earlier?
I don't have that vision.
Okay. If we can, we'll look into it, and we'll try to figure it out.
Great, well, you, we don't need to decide that today. So y'all get together and y'all figure out what you want.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any comments or? Everybody's going to study this. We don't, our comment is, we, let's see, our next meeting, regular meeting, well, we've got one tomorrow, the next one is July 8th or something like that. We probably need to make a decision by then because they've got to get all of the, they got to, do what now?
July 9th is the next one.
July 9th. So by the 9th, we need to be prepared to decide what, what COLA we're going to give so that they'll have time to get it all put together. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay, all right. The VA Office is the next one I've got for a quick question. They are, they are not on our phone system, and they don't have the ability to transfer phone anywhere, or anyway, it's a difficult thing for them. I don't know all their problems. But they leave, and they, currently Ted transfers his phone, and I think sometimes Barbara transfers her phone to her sale, and, and discussing with him and all, I think the easiest thing to do is to give them a phone, he asked for some, us to furnish them some cell phones, but I don't know if we want to do that or just give them a stipend for their cellphone allowance.
Would they be willing to keep their cell phones and just do a stipend?
I think they would. I mean, it's, they're all worried about is their money, I guess, so I don't know why they wouldn't. I wouldn't want to carry two phones.
Me neither.
But...
All three of them actually transferred.
All three? So we need all three of them to get them? Okay. What do we normally pay for, is there a normal for supplement?
But JP, you're getting 600 a year.
That's $50 a month.
When they change this, are they all going to 903?
I doubt it.
No, just keep what they have and pay them.
Yeah, yeah.
Just pay their phone bill?
Just pay them, pay them a stipend. And they pay their own bill if they need to compensate.
Okay. So I'll talk to Ted then and see if we could give them 50 or $100 a month or something, if that would satisfy them in a supplement, and get back to you at the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody. Next thing I've got is the DA's office and County Attorney's Office. They got all the SB 22 money, which was $250,000 in each office, and they gave that in raises that we approved a few months ago. And Sandy, you can help me here, but I think they moved, the ones that were eligible to get raises, they gave raises to them, and some of them that were getting raises from other funds, they pulled those away from them and gave them to other people in their office that were eligible to, yeah, they weren't eligible for the SB 22 money, but they were for the other funds. So the DA has come and said he doesn't expect his people for a raise, and I don't think Calvin does either because they have it. So I don't think in considering COLA raises, they've already got a pretty good increase across the board, so I don't, I think they should be excluded from any of the COLA raises since they got significant raises during, during the year due to the Senate bill. So if anybody wants to investigate, we don't need to vote on it today, but just want to make you aware of it, and my opinion is we shouldn't pay them, and the DA said his people didn't need it, but I, Calvin hadn't been, is Calvin back yet? I haven't seen him, maybe. He's been, I think he's on...
He's on his internal, but it's been getting in, it's bringing you, so he's not getting any of those extra...
Anyway, so, okay. And I guess that SB 22 money, is that a calendar year or a budget year money going forward?
Well, it's a...
We don't know.
Well, it's kind of neither. It's their year, but yeah, it started in August.
Oh, late, it started late, yeah.
Yeah, it's not our budget year, and it's not a true calendar year either, but I guess it would be the 22 budget year.
And they're supposed to keep, apparently, they funded it for two or four years or something?
Two years.
Two years? So if they don't renew that this next session, then it'll go away. And all of them are aware of that, so.
Does it have to reapply again?
Yes, they have to reapply, and the sheriff has to reapply for his. So anyway, if anybody got any comments, wants to talk to the DA or CA about it, and I'll try to find Calvin, but I don't, I think he's off on duty is what's, I think, nobody told me that he was on duty.
So no raises for either of those offices?
Not as of right now.
Then I think Glenn, if we hear this sheet, we could take those dollars now.
Okay. Yeah, so it'll lower our total amount. Yes, okay, that'd be good. Yeah, it's going to be, sheriff is, yeah, planning on spending on radios. So, all right. That takes care of those two, three. Next one is the environmental budget. As we're all aware of, we're having some issues in environmental health, shorthanded, we're getting, getting some issues and Cal, or excuse me, I think we talked about Richard ready to move away from that position and hire a full-time person over it. But the public knows, the Health Department was merged into Homeland Security in 2020, January 1st, 2020, thinking it was going to be a short time period until we, because we weren't getting any applicants in, and we had a retiree effective January, or December 31st. So January 1st, we made Homeland Security Director over the Health Department, thinking we would eventually get some applicants in, and we didn't, and then COVID hit, and it just became a permanent position. So he's, he's ready to do something different, and he thinks we should get a director, and he thinks that director should have all the licenses required, which is what we were asking for last time, and we didn't, at that time, we didn't get any. And then he thinks we, with all of the growth, he thinks we need an additional health inspector added to the budget. A health inspector, he's, I'll get with Stacy and Sandy about it, but he's estimating vehicle, clothing, fuel, maintenance, and all for health inspector with total $60,500. He's thinking the director for the vehicle, clothing, fuel, maintenance would be about $90,000 total to add to the Health Department budget. And we have not been spending any money for a director in that department because we gave Richard a raise to cover both of them. So we've been saving pretty good money for the last five years, four years. So anybody got any thoughts on, about the new positions that we need to add and?
Question, on the $60,500 for the new inspector, is that, because that's what they make now. So is that meaning?
I'll have to, we'll have to get with him, because he's got vehicle, clothing, fuel, maintenance, total, well, I interpret, well, here, see how you interpret it. I interpret it as all of those together, but the way he wrote it.
Because they do have a vehicle now. They have, we'd have to get another vehicle.
Well, that's one, I thought that's what he was saying there, and that would be total. But you may be right, he may mean $60,000 salary.
Well, yeah, because the other ones are making.
There's no way we can hire.
Yeah, okay.
For $60,000.
All right.
And then all that extra.
Okay, so the, so you think that 90 for the director would be the same then? So he's proposing a $60,500 salary for a new health inspector and a $90,000 for a director?
I'm telling you, you're not going to get an inspector for that much inclusive of all that, and that's one.
No, no, well, that's what he's saying, we're, Sandy has corrected me, and I agree with her, it's $60,500, which is what the other inspectors are making. So we don't, you know, I guess what we need to do is that when we decide to raise the percent of COLA, we should raise that new position to match whatever that turns out to be. So they'd be at the same pay scale as the other inspectors.
They'll need two vehicles, because I'm sure the director and then the inspector would be able to do so.
Yeah, probably, yeah. And then the director, he's saying it's going to take $90,000 to hire one, from talking to the other, what other counties are paying. And they're hard to find, so. Any comments? We want to think about this one too, or what's, what's your pleasure?
I tell you what, I agree. I basically, you're not going to get anybody for less than that, but I can't understand this, and I'll just quite frankly, we've probably got one qualified that works for us that can pass every test there has been.
Well, there, all our people, I think, have all the tests, but again, we'll advertise position, and we may hire that, one of our own people, but we still got to have another position.
Actually, inspectors that have passed, how many do we have exactly? I'm talking about that can inspect.
I think we got, we got three positions now, I think, and we got two. Yes, that's true.
One of them is, I believe one of them was off with some, was that the part-time or was that the full-time that had been ill?
My sheet shows we've got. Where's Rodney? Oh, okay. Grant? Okay, all right. All right, so we do, we got, under the 2200, we got Brittany and an open position, and then in that other fund, we've got, we got the other one. Is that on part of that grant money? Is that what that other fund is? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, part of, part of that is grant.
So do we have an open position for inspector or a part-time?
We have an open position for a health inspector right now because the one that's there has gone part-time.
Is that position a $60,500 position?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
That's, what that kind of tells me is basically, we probably need to grow up a little bit in order to get some ways qualified to take it. May I ask you this, is David, is he, is he an inspector?
What?
He's asking if David's an inspector.
Don Jones, is he an inspector?
No. No, he's just, he's just acting supervisor.
Judge, so to clarify, is the recommendation to add a supervisor and an additional fourth inspector position?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because Richard no longer wants to be the department head, so we want, we need to hire a department, we've always had a department head, and I told the story why we didn't have one. We need to go back to that, and that one needs to be an inspector. If we get a, I guess my only heartburn is if we're going to hire a new person to be the director that will be able to inspect, do we really need to hire, because we're already getting another, a third inspector? But.
That was my thought.
Maybe, yeah, maybe if we kept, maybe if the one we got works part-time, or if we kept one part-time or something, it might be the next step to go. She didn't want to stay? Well, my recommendation would be is let's go ahead and budget for a new director and a $90,000 salary and figure in all the other money that we'll need, and then let's think about the other health inspector.
May I ask you this?
That we can go and get the paperwork started on that.
I apologize. We said basically, no, we're talking about Health Department, but actually, we're talking about the two divisions.
Environmental, yes.
The septic aspect and then the other.
Health clinic is another, and it's got a separate.
Clinic, yes. Okay, my question is, are we, we're not combining those two. The other one, the health, the health. Okay.
But Richard's, Richard is also recommending that the current nurse out there be made the department head out, over them and have them separate.
That's what I'm saying, but that, that grant that we have out there is separated from these two offices, am I correct? Yeah, the clinic, in other words, that's operating on one completely fully, am I correct?
All right, so, is anybody got any objection to go ahead and add to the budget for a new director at $90,000 and then we'll figure in a vehicle and clothing, car and maintenance? Oh, that, don't do the inspector yet. Everybody okay with that? And we'll revisit, I'll visit with, with Richard, David. You coming in to have comments or just listen? Okay. Yes. No. I think, that's my opinion. Yeah, everybody agree, get them vehicle, yeah. Okay. All right. So. We're good with that one. It's just another inspector.
And the other, sort of like we put Jones in there as a supervisor because there's so much going on, not only with the inspectors, but with the support staff, the clerical staff.
Paperwork and all that.
Paperwork, and so you can't dedicate, even Joe Lilly, when he was here, he did a little bit of inspecting, but he was a director more or less. So I don't know how much we would actually gain as far as inspections with just getting a director that can do that. I mean, I think he should know it, if he's going to be in charge, he probably needs to know all about the septic and the food inspections and all of that, but how much?
I believe, I believe the qualification there, he should be an inspector if he's going to.
Oh, he has to be, yeah. We don't want our one that doesn't have it.
For both the sewage.
And the, and the health, yeah.
So he needs to be a DR and a RS.
Or she, he or she.
Or she, yeah. But like I said, as far as how much he'll actually be able to get in the field and do, I don't know.
Well, we appreciate those, I appreciate those comments, I can't speak for the others, but I think what we're trying to do today is get some things in concrete, and we know we want to go with the director, and let's think about the other position and talk some more about it. We're not saying we're not going to do that, we're just not ready to do that right now.
Okay. Well, I was listening. Okay, I'll come up here and take.
Oh, I appreciate, we, you're welcome in here anytime, David. All right, so we're all good with that. All right. All right, Ag Life, we, we've been given a salary supplement to two positions, and of course, then we, we pay for one clerk, no, we only pay for one full-time position there. The only concern I have with them is, I called Hurley Miller, the head of the Ag Life, and I said, when are we going to replace the Ag agent? And he said he didn't know, they're still working on it. They've been still advertising it internally, and they've had nobody apply for it as of a week ago, when I talked to him. And I asked him, what were they trying to employ? What credentials, what kind of, whatever? And he, he really couldn't make it clear to me what, I don't know if I wasn't understanding or he wasn't making me, making it clear. But I called him because I, I mean, if we're going to, if they're going to hire somebody that's green, come in here and being trained, I don't think, I'm not in favor of paying the same supplement as what we were paying to Sarah. So I think my proposal would be is let's just take that out of the budget, make it zero, and then see what they hire, and we can always go back in. I don't, I'm afraid they're going to look at that and tell them when they're hiring them that you're, you're going to get this $26,717, and we're, I don't know that we want to do that. I, I think we ought to control that, not them. Just my thoughts.
How's this, seriously, how's this going to affect the resolution that we just, or the contract? Have y'all read it? How's that going to?
I don't think it affects it all. Mary's acting as agent or whatever the title is they hold. So they have supervision with Mary, but they're, he just says it's, the way I understood it, they only hire like three times a year, and that's because they do like a month or two of training. So they want all of them to be in the training at the same time, and they get through the training, and then they start over with another class, and they do that training, and then they start over again, so.
I do agree with you in reference, we shouldn't start it.
Well, we all have the option. I mean, if they can hire somebody that's got a lot of experience and all, and, and that helps, if we help them with the supplement to get that person they want to hire, then I'm good with that. But I don't want them just to say, well, we're just, they're going to, they're going to spend our money the way they want to, I guess is my, maybe I'm being hard-headed, I don't know. But I just don't like them being in control of it, not us.
I hear that. My only concern would be, I don't want to dissuade people from taking the job if they see.
Well, I told Hurley that, I said, look, I mean, and I told him just like I told y'all, I said, I think that's what I want to do when y'all are looking at trying to get somebody, and call us, and then we can talk and see what we'd be willing to pay for those, I mean, we should have say-so in it if we're going to pay.
I certainly agree with that.
We have two, we have two of them actually.
We pay one full-time, and then one we pay a supplement in Mary. We only pay one, right? There's not, yeah. Part-time, okay.
Well, that's what, is the secretary full-time or part-time? Okay, because what we did is we put the money when they put a vacancy, we moved it over to her salary. What happened to that money then?
My understanding is that there's no shortage of potential applicants for it. In fact, I think they, they keep getting calls from people who would like to apply for it, or the internal workings of, of the agency.
Well, as of last week, he told me they hadn't had none.
Well, I think they have a process of posting internally before they go exter.
And that's true. And he's been asking them to go externally, and they haven't done that yet, so.
Right. So I think once they go externally, they'll have a bunch of applicants.
Maybe. Again, if they don't have these trainings fall, it could still be six, eight months before we get anybody, so.
Well, let's, I'm, I'm good thinking about it. I'm not even opposed to that route, I just, I just want to make sure we don't dissuade anybody. Maybe, maybe we half it or something, just so, I don't know. I know Hurley will know, but I also know that people, especially younger people, will hop online and look up information for themselves.
They'd be pretty creative if they could figure out we were paying a supplement, and then find it in our budget, they'd be pretty, but maybe they could. We probably need to hire them for something else if they're that good.
Yeah.
All right, I mean, Mark wants to cut it in half, that's not a bad idea, that, I'll be giving just a whole lot, so I mean, that's.
Like just cut that in half and?
Cut it in half or.
I agree.
Cut it to 10 or something, I don't care. I just don't want it to be that.
I don't think that this commissioner's court basically needs to do away with a possible position in reference to that. And if you want to cut the thing in half and then we can go from there, that's great, but the moment we take it off the books, then we probably have lost it, and it's too, it's, it's a positive thing for the community.
What do you mean, we've lost it?
Well, we've, we've basically, it shows that we're really not interested in doing one, so.
No, that's not true, Phillip. I talked to Hurley, and I told him we were very interested in it.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying.
And I said, I was concerned, I shared my concern that I'd shared with y'all, and I said, I don't know what we're going to do, but I said, you always know, we can call, we can go to court, and if that's something that we need to do, we'll look at doing it. I'm not, not saying we won't ever do, we, he may hire a crackerjack, we want to pay more. I don't know.
I'm good with cutting it in half.
Okay.
I am, I am.
All right, Sandy, did you hear, we're cutting it in half. For the one, open position, we'll cut it in half for now. Whatever, whatever the math is. 13, 350 or 358?
And when he does go on the hiring process and say he has trouble hiring somebody, we can always add to it.
Yes.
Somebody says, I got to have X amount of dollars to work.
And I'll call him back and again, and make sure, I'll tell him what we're doing and what we've done, and tell him if he's having a problem, to call me. And we'll meet, and if we need to pony up a little bit of money, if it's the one they think they need to hire, then we can always move money out of contingency and take care of it. Okay. Okay, well, that's, that's where we're gonna head then, alright, um, alright, now then, Dave, yep?
Uh, will Mary get any raises on her side?
Uh, well, y'all, that's...
That's always been...
Yeah, well, y'all, y'all wanna give Mary a...
Hey, I, my personal opinion, Mary's doing a good job out there, she's definitely out in the community working, uh, I would entertain giving her a raise.
Okay.
But it depends on kinda where we're at too, so...
I, I agree, we need to give whatever we're doing across the board.
I think Mary's doing an excellent job.
So, we wanna stay, put her in with the, all their employees, or make it different?
Okay, now, understand this, that basically, we're talking about...
She's not an employee, I don't know that we should do the...
We also have the secretary that's full-time.
Percentage, do what now?
That, now, the secretary, we're paying full-time, so we'd have to increase that also.
Well, that'll become, that'll be, that'll be in the, in the COLA, but, Mary's a little different circumstance.
Yes.
Mary's state agent is what we give her?
That's right, I, I understand that, there's been two times today.
If we did a five percent raise, I'm just throwing that out there, it'd be thirteen hundred and thirty-five dollars for Mary on top of her twenty-five thousand.
That'd get her to twenty-eight. Anybody got an idea? How much was it?
It'd be twenty-eight oh fifty-two if we did a five percent of all the board, so we did go up.
I'd be all right, I'd be all right raising it a couple of grand, that'd be twenty, twenty-eight seven seventeen.
But don't do her any...
Well, I'm, we're not there yet, I'm, I just, I mean, I just, I'm throwing it out there, I was, Steve threw up five, I was gonna go a little higher than that, whatever, what's, what's the pleasure, what do you think, Mark, you're over there a lot, what do you...
It's certainly warranted, we probably should, um, consider it between now and the next meeting, um, I'm not sure how merit raises work when we're, have a stipend, but I'm comfortable with the...
I forget what their stipend is from the state.
Okay, sure. Well, she's done an extra job and she's pulling extra, an extra burden.
Well, that's kinda what I was thinking, to give her a little extra, she's done a, from my, what I've heard, she's done a great job, so...
And she's doing, I mean, her job is community health, and, so, her engagement in public schools and education has been exemplary.
Well, you wanna wait, you say you wanted to wait and think about it?
Uh, well, we can, I mean, I, I'm good with, with a couple, couple grand, as you suggested.
About a couple of grand?
I'm good with it.
Alright, raise her to, an even two thousand dollars. Okay. So, we're, we're totally done with that one, we're done with that one. Okay, uh, Homeland Security. I believe I told y'all that, that Richard said he's probably, he doesn't have a retirement date, but it's on his mind, uh, he, the words he used to me was, he promised me to stay through the, my next term, and he says, "I'm not gonna promise you the next term", and I said, "Okay", I said, "But you don't have to stay just for, for me", I said, "He's been here thirty-eight years or something like that, thirty-five years", uh, anyway, he's been here a long time, so, the, in discussing with him, what we're, what I'm suggesting, my suggestion is, and he's requested it, is a full-time assistant EMC, emergency management coordinator, and hire somebody to be an assistant that we can move into his position when he retires, so we don't have to go look, so that would give somebody a time to, for him to train and be there, he may hire with, there's really only one person in there, Julie, that, it's, she's under fifty, I think, and the rest of them are all late sixties or in seventies, so, they're not gonna be, I don't know that they're gonna be a long time stay, I mean, one of them may apply for it, and that's fine, but, uh, but because of the ages on it, I'm look, I'm thinking we're gonna be looking at either outside, or if, if Julie wanted it from inside, then there certainly would be a consideration, but, I think we oughta, my recommendation is, we budget for a full-time assistant, uh, emergency management coordinator.
Which that department falls under you.
Right, that's why, I'm recommending that, uh, the salary, we're gonna have to figure out, I need to talk to Richard a little bit about it, but we need to create, if everybody's alright to create that position, then we'll try to figure out a recommendation for a pay scale. And, before we decide on that, he's also requested, which I, uh, he's requested that all his people are trained in basically the, the same thing as investigators or at least deputies, and they're being paid quite a bit under, at least the deputy's pay, and he thinks they oughta be more equitable and it would help morale a little bit, so, I, my recommendation is that, instead of giving, I, I recommend, my recommendation, we give each, each of the, the ones under Homeland Security ten four thousand, is that the only employees he has in ten four thousand? Uh, there's five of them, that we give five thousand dollar raise and then whatever percentage we do, that will get them up to comparables of sheriff's office, get them closer to being comparables to sheriff's office. And, like he says, all of them, well, I, I'll read it to you, let's see here, he says that, um, Brothers has thirty-nine years of experience, Parker forty-five, Marassi, or Maras, is that his second name, Maras?
Marass.
Marassi, uh, fifteen years, and, of course, David and, David Alexander and Richard, they've had, they've been up here a long time, and David's been, David's T A B C, I think, so they've had a lot, lots of years of experience, and we're paying starting salaries to sheriff's deputies more money than they're making, so, I...
Well, what also is a little different, this is, is all of these employees all have to be fire investigator certified, so they're not just police officers...
Right, correct.
They also gotta go get certified to be an arson investigator, so, you know, they're, they actually...
They're also environmental investigators.
Exactly, so there's more certifications they have to have to do this job than, than just a, you know, patrol officer or even an investigator at the sheriff's office, it's not required to have a investigator license or be certified to be an investigator at a law enforcement agency, it does require you to be certified to be able to do this job.
Yeah. Well, that's my, Steve, you certainly know more about this than I, you've got more than I know about it, so, I'll defer to you if you think my offer's not valid and should be more or less, I mean, I'll defer back to you.
I definitely agree that they need to be brought up some, just based off, again, the, the certifications and requirements they have to have to be able to do their job, plus, all of these employees have been here for a while, it's not...
A long time, yeah.
It's not like we're, we're having to retrain and, and get somebody up to speed, so, I'm, I'm good with the raise.
It'd be, I mean, we gotta do them all, I think, I think the five, Alexander, Brothers, Jones, Marassi and Parker, all would have to be on that same level.
Because they also all have to rotate being on-call, which we don't pay them any on-call time or anything like that unless they get called out.
For fire investigation.
Question, reference to that, is this in, uh, include the raise that we're giving across, is that added to or not?
No, I'm saying, this is a raise and then they'll still get their COLA.
Say it again.
They'll get the raise, and then they'll, they will get this five thousand dollar raise, and then they will get the cost of living raise.
The, the five thousand will get them up, the three that are, uh, at fifty-eight, four fifty-eight, five thousand will get them up to what we're currently paying a sheriff's deputy, or within a hundred dollars or so, and then, then they would get the COLA on top of that to keep up with it, and then the other two that are paying more, they're also at different levels, so they would go up to the same levels, that would get them closer to the levels of the sheriff's department budget, budget, is the way I'm looking at it, so...
I, I don't object to putting that in.
Everybody okay with that? Phillip, you alright?
Do what?
You okay with the five thousand across the board for those five people? Plus the...
I have no problem, uh, I have no problem with that.
Alright, so we'll...
Are, are you gonna do the same thing to the constable?
Well, uh, we ain't got there yet. The constable, the constables are overpaid compared to all the other counties by quite a bit of money, I mean, our, our constables are making twenty thousand dollars, I think it was, more than any other county comparable, county, other counties comparable, so, we ain't got to that one yet. Um, alright, so, we're okay with Homeland Security, we're gonna, um, try to come up with a number to add an assistant emergency management coordinator, and then five thousand plus any raise to the other five in there. Alright, anybody got anything else before we go to executive session? Non-alentine a motion to go in executive session under items one through four.
So moved.
Second.
And motion second on the favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries, we're in executive session at eleven oh one. Alright, um...
You got us all?
I don't know, no? No?
See if we can get back up.
Think y'all's time is gone, but hurry back.
We're live, Judge.
All right, it's 12:03, we're back in regular session. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned at 12:03.